So we'll go ahead and we also welcome those that may be joining us on our website or over social media and then any press that may be present or view the meeting later. First order of business this evening will be additions and/or deletions to the agenda. Mr. City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I do have a number of adjustments to your agenda this evening, so if you'll bear with me as I go through it, what we have prepared is a proposed revised agenda. And what we are wanting to do is removing an item from the consent agenda, which is the budget amendment 2025-P12-01, and adding that as regular agenda item H. And then we are removing, excuse me, adding item F, which is consideration of resolution authorizing the surplus of a pool heater. And I'll explain that when we get there, why we needed to add that. And then item G is consideration of resolution authorizing the donation that has to come after the item F. So those are the three changes. We also have a, Mayor added a closed session for attorney-client matters.
Okay, having heard this, what's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended by our city manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? You may record your vote. Okay, the vote is seven zero, so the agenda has been approved unanimously. We're now down to public forum. Have one person that signed up, Kelly Johnson. And if you would, please just state your name and your subject for the clerk, and it'll be a two-minute time limit.
Greetings to everyone. My name is Kelly Johnson, and I am of the Holly Hill area. My subject is the, I'm sorry, I'm writing specifically about the lien and foreclosure policy for community development, okay? I do have handouts for you guys when I leave, but I'm basically just going to get straight to the questions to address the board. If you would, take time and read the whole letter. I stand as community liaison, not so much as a developer or builder. However, I am bringing the voices of those I associate with when it comes to low, to low-income housing. Question one, limited development track record. The question is, how is it that the community housing solutions was chosen based on their portfolio? Because their, however, their actual development appears to be limited to fewer than thirty renovated homes, giving much value in, to their contributions, yes, as homeowner education and home repairs, serving over seven hundred and forty residents and improving fifteen hundred homes? That is duly noted. However, it has been stated that they feel like they are not the best qualified and would like to know how their portfolio fits the purpose and the solution of development, of a large-scale development. Number two, the lack of competitive process was brought to me, and it says, was a formal request, was a formal RFP ever issued by the city to identify qualified developers, nonprofit or private for affordable housing projects? If not, why not? Then does the state mandate that it had to be a nonprofit? Then consideration of private developers. Other municipalities have successfully partnered with private developers who committed to affordability goals and through incentive like tax credits and density housing. Why is Thomasville not exploring these options more aggressively? Okay? Thank you so much for your time, and of course, I will leave these full letters with the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now down to recognitions and presentations. The first will be proclamation for homeownership month. This will be Councilmember Hunter Thrift.
Proclamation recognizing June as homeownership month. Whereas June is National Homeownership Month, a time to celebrate the value that owning a home brings to families, neighborhoods, and cities across America. And whereas homeownership contributes to a strong economy, fosters vibrant communities, and represents the fulfillment of the American dream for many individuals and families. And whereas the city of Thomasville remains committed to increasing homeownership opportunities for its residents through the successful efforts of public, private, and non-private organizations that work to expand access and affordability. And now therefore, it be proclaimed that Raleigh York Jr., Mayor of the city of Thomasville, does hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as homeownership month in the city of Thomasville, and encourages all residents, businesses, and organizations to recognize this observance all year long and continue supporting initiatives that help individuals and families achieve homeownership. This the sixteenth day of June 2025. And so we appreciate all the work Home Solutions does in our county and our city. Thank you very much. If you'd like to say anything?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to point out that next year, we will be celebrating thirty years in business, and we will also have worked with the city of Thomasville for fifteen of those. I looked back today and found that our first contract with the city of Thomasville was signed on February fifteenth of 2011. So I feel like that gives us a long history of working together with you guys. In the last hundred homes that we've repaired, twenty-six of those have been Thomasville addresses, and then we have thirteen more in the pipeline right now to be completed as soon as possible. We've also facilitated over $200,000 in down payment assistance for Thomasville residents, as well as counseled hundreds of residents. At this point, I am sad to say that we've only built one house in Thomasville, but we are very excited about the potential to be able to build many more houses over here in partnership with you all. And thank you so much for recognizing homeownership month with this proclamation. Thank you.
Is there an event to maybe start?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, there is. Thank you. So on June the twenty-fifth, which is Wednesday next week, we are celebrating homeownership month with a neighborhood cookout. We will have a grill and burgers and hot dogs and chips and drinks and everything. We'd love for any and everybody to attend. It's kind of our way of giving back to the community. You all know that we have our handout with fundraisers and things throughout the year to help fill funding gaps and that kind of stuff, but we've written a grant that helps us to cover these types of things, and so we will be feeding the community. We'll have some raffle items and things like that, but we'd love for you to join us if you would. Thank you.
Our next item is item B, proclamation, June eight, June nineteenth. This will be Mayor Pro Tim Jacquez Johnson.
Thank you so much, Mayor York. And if we could get up one of our community leaders, Mr. Anthony Long, to join us at the podium for our reading of proclamation for June team, which is on June nineteenth. But here in our community, we'll be celebrating it on Saturday, June twenty-first, at Pace Park. The proclamation reads, whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, declaring all slaves shall be then therefore and forever free. And whereas it took almost three years of conflict and loss to bring about the end of the Civil War, culminating the end of national ratification of the Thirteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution in December of eighteen sixty-five, formally abolishing the sanctioned institution of slavery, and whereas the news of freedom spread gradually throughout the nation, and on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers led by General Gordy Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas and issued General Order Number Three, not seeing freedom to some of the last enslaved individuals in America. And whereas June nineteenth has become nationally recognized as National Freedom Day, commemorating the abolition of stinking slavery in the United States and celebrating African-Americans' resilience, heritage, and contributions, now therefore it be proclaimed that Mayor Raleigh York Jr., the city of Thomasville, does proclaim June nineteenth as June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the city of Thomasville, and encourages all of the residents to recognize the profound historical significance of the celebration honoring the legacy of freedom, unity, and perseverance within the African-American history, local community, and our nation. Proclaim this sixteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you. If you'd like to say anything?
Kelly Johnson is also a member. I got you. I got you. First off, I want to say thanks to Mayor Raleigh York and the rest of the Thomasville City Council for recognizing Juneteenth every year since we started in 2020. Thanks to Councilman Mr. Jacquez Johnson for inviting us to join you with your trail ride this weekend. And with that, we're excited to be a part of it. We will continue to recognize community leaders for their outstanding work and dedication to this beautiful city. And we will, for their outstanding work and dedication to the city. For this event, we are inviting all people and cultures from all walks of life to come and join us on that momentous occasion, and I want to thank you once again. Thank you, Thomasville. Thomasville may eat me. Thank you.
Now down to item C, proclamation, parks and recreation month, and this will be Councilmember Scott Stires.
Everybody else is standing up here, so I guess it's at this way at this time. Anthony, you and your family have been an integral part of the recreation community for a long time, too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for all you've done with this proclamation for you, too. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities across the country promoting health and wellness by improving both physical and mental well-being. It promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being. It encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And it provides programming and education opportunities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education, which are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports economic prosperity by increasing property values, expanding the local tax base, attracting tourism, helping businesses thrive, and contributing to crime reduction in North Carolina, local parks generate over six billion in economic activity and provide over thirty-seven thousand jobs, ranking the state tenth in the nation. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a fundamental to the environmental well-being of our communities, providing adaptable infrastructure that enhances resistance, resilience in the face of natural disasters, and preserving the ecological beauty of our natural spaces for all generations. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the city of Thomasville, North Carolina, recognizes the many benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, Raleigh York Jr., Mayor of the city of Thomasville, does hereby proclaim that July twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five, is Parks and Recreation Month, and urges all residents to take advantage of many recreational activities available throughout the city, both during the month of July and throughout the year. Thank you very much. Cory Tovin and his staff do a tremendous job. Want to say something?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the recognition and all of the support. We stand up here as one key, you know, one little part of the bigger community mission for our city. We're blessed to have great departments that we partner with, with our police and fire and all the divisions, as you'll see with our Fun on the Run program coming up. Those start tomorrow morning for our community. Every Tuesday, you'll get to visit a different city department for our youth. They can visit our city hall tomorrow, and then from there, all throughout our city, and get exposed to what our city government does. But also, I think that the proclamation hit on the impact that our volunteers and the community support really make us churn and make us roll. So we're grateful for all the support in our community. Come enjoy the pool, come enjoy Dope Park for some Little League baseball here shortly, and thank you, everyone, for the recognition. Appreciate it.
Now down to item five, public hearing. This is consideration of rezoning Z twenty-five dash zero 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 four. Apparent owner is Blair Appraisal Service Incorporated. Location is forty-seventeen Ballpark Road, parcel number one six three one three zero 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 seven. Existence zoning is M one, light industrial. Proposed zoning is R ten, low-density residential. Recognize Mr. Chuck George with this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The following item has been before the planning board of adjustment on Tuesday, May the thirteenth. They held a public hearing, and the subject property is, site is point six eight acres, undeveloped. It does contain a shed. The applicant proposed to rezone the property for residential development, specifically single-family homes. The area includes mix of residential, church, industrial, and commercial properties. This request is compatible with the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan and surrounding development. Critic consent from the property owner has been provided in accordance to recent legislations. And the, at the public hearing, the board voted six to zero to approve the request for the following reason. The zoning aligns with the twenty thirty-five land use plan. It is compatible with the surrounding area. The rezoning poses no harm to adjacent property values. Further, the planning board finds that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest due to the consistency with the comprehensive plan. As a result, it will furtherance the goals and objectives of the plan, and we have no opposition on this case either. That's my report. Thank you.
I will open the public hearing and ask anyone that would speak for this rezoning to come forward, please. Please state your name for the record, please.
I'm Brent Blair, and I'm the one requesting the rezoning, and it's basically, I'd like to subdivide this into two, two separate, single-family building lots. That's kind of the reasoning for it, yeah.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would speak for? Is there anyone who would speak against? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed and defer to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we move to rezone the property Z twenty-five dash zero 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 four from M one to R ten, low-density residential.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any discussion?
For the reasons, oh, did we know that? For the reasons that were presented. For these following reasons. The rezoning aligns with the twenty thirty-five land use plan. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and the rezoning poses no harm to adjacent property values. I think we had to do it after here and say it.
Second. Okay, now any discussion? Okay, you may record your vote. And that's seven zero, so that has been approved. We're down, now down to item six, consent agenda. We'll recognize our deputy city manager, Mr. Eddie Bowling, for this.
Three items on the consent agenda this evening. First is consideration of the minutes and briefing meeting dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Item B is consideration of the minutes for the council meeting on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Item C is consideration of Thomasville Trail Ride Festival road closure ordinance pursuant to section seventy-eight dash thirty-two of the Thomasville City Ordinance. The Thomasville Trail Ride Festival road closure shall close from four p.m. to nine p.m. on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Commerce Street, Amal Park Drive, from East Main to East Field Street. What's your honest, presented for consent agenda for the season?
Thank you very much. I'm going to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Jacquez Johnson for the request.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mayor. I am requesting that I abstain from the vote of the consent agenda due to my planning of the Thomasville Trail Ride.
Okay, having heard this from the Mayor Pro Tim, what's the pleasure of council with regard to this request? That he be recused.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we recuse Councilman Johnson from this vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, you may record your vote. Okay, the, the vote is six zero, and of course, he abstained from that vote since it concerned him. Now, what's the pleasure of council with regard to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a mo, make a motion? Wrong. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as stated by the deputy manager. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, you may record your votes. Okay, we have six yeses, and then we have the one recusal request that was granted. So this is unanimously approved. Thank you very much. We're now down to item seven, our regular agenda. The first item is consideration of resolution to set fiscal year twenty twenty-six school supplement tax rate. This has been before the finance committee. The rate was, the requested rate was nineteen and a half cents. And so what's the pleasure of council with regard to this item?
Mr. Mayor, this may be a little bit too, little too late. I would ask that we fund the school supplement fund at nineteen cents instead of nineteen and a half cents.
Okay, I have, I have a motion to fund it at nineteen cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Now any discussion?
Do you want to share your change of heart, where it comes from?
Um, no.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'm not going to try to read between lines and figure out why Mr. Grimes wants to do this. It doesn't necessarily mean that I may not share some of his concerns. We are way late in the budget process to be making changes in, in the tax rate. I know the schools, just like the city, and a lot of nonprofits are scrambling trying to get a budget together before June thirtieth, and I think it would be tremendously unfair to them to spring that on them at this point, so I can't support it. And I certainly respect that.
Any more discussion?
Is this one of the ones that has to be a roll call?
Yes. Okay, hearing none, we will, at this time, vote. As I call your name, please vote yes for or no against, and this is to vote for a nineteen cent.
Nineteen and a half cents. Oh, no.
You said nineteen cents.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nineteen cent.
Shoot my own self in my foot.
School supplement tax rate. Okay? Councilmember Grimes.
Uh, I don't know which way this is going to go. Leave it like it is. No against my own motion.
Councilmember Hunt.
No.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
No.
Councilmember Shell. Councilmember Stires.
No.
Councilmember Thrift.
No.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Okay, that motion, it did not pass. It was a six to one vote, with Councilmember Shell voting for. Now we'll take another shot at it. So we're, we're now down to, what's the consideration of council for the item A, of consideration of the resolution to set fiscal year twenty twenty-six school supplement tax rate?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve and set the resolution to set the fiscal year twenty twenty-six school supplement tax rate at nineteen and a half.
Is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion on this? Okay, as I call your name, please vote either yes for or no against. Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt.
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Shell. Councilmember Stires.
Yes.
Councilmember Thrift.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Okay, we have a six to one vote. The one no vote is Councilmember Shell. So the nineteen and a half cent school supplement tax rate has been approved. Now down to item B, consideration of fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget ordinance and rate schedules. Anybody want to recognize our finance director, Mr. Avant?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The budget ordinance authorizes appropriations for the operations of city government for the fiscal year twenty, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six by the fund.
Department and division level. It details the expected revenues by fund available for the fiscal year to meet appropriations. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget ordinance totals fifty-eight million seven hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars, and it levies a tax rate of sixty-two cents per hundred dollars of taxable property valuation for the general fund, which is no change from prior year. The ordinance levies a school supplement tax rate of nineteen and a half cents per hundred dollars of taxable property valuation, which is no change from prior year. The ordinance levies a municipal vehicle tax of twenty dollars per registered motor vehicle, which is also no change from prior year. Approval of the ordinance includes approval of all departmental fee schedules that were provided to the council, and we'll need a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget ordinance and rate schedules by a roll call vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of council with regard to this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget ordinance and rate schedules.
Second, now any discussion?
I want to thank our managers and our finance team that works really hard on this and pulls it all together. I know it's a tremendous amount of work, and I also want to recognize that our council was able to keep our tax rate the same without any changes, and I also think that is a testament of previous councils who set us up in the right position, and I appreciate that. That's all I have to say.
Any more discussion?
This budget has a lot of really good stuff in it, so if you want to take a look, you definitely should. I think it reflects the entire city's commitment to taking care of our employees as best we can, and we try to do that a little bit better every year, which makes me very happy, and so, yeah, don't read it if you're tired or anything, but I do really appreciate all of the work that goes into it, and it is very exciting to enjoy the financial position that we do.
Anything else? Okay, I will call the roll, and you can voice your vote, either yes for or no against. Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Shell.
Yes.
Councilmember Stires.
Yes.
Councilmember Thrift.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Okay, we have a unanimous seven zero vote. So thank y'all very much on that, and thank you, Thomas, for good work your department has done, and know, and just know, and let them know how much we appreciate them and all the hard work they do, and also our staff that works together with you, putting all this together.
All of you.
Yeah, all right, thank, thank all of you. Okay, we're now down to item C, consideration of the Thomasville Main Street District Map. I'll recognize our city manager, Mr. Brandt.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very excited to announce that we will be entering into the Main Street program, which is a North Carolina Department of Commerce program to enhance small-town downtowns, and we are going to be approved into that program in July. As a part of that, we have to actually designate a Main Street area of our downtown. This is so that those areas can be tracked for reporting purposes. If there are, if there ever become funding available through the state grants, things of that nature, it can be designated. If there are, if there ever become funding available through the state grants, things of that nature, it can be designated into that area. It also helps guide the work that's being done by Tammy Joyce, our Main Street Director, which we can now call her the Main Street Director. And so there, the map that we have that was presented to you, it essentially runs from Los Agave's Restaurant on the east side to just past, well, to T-Ville Diner on the, on the north side from east to west. And on the south side, it runs from the small commercial center at the edge of Fisher Ferry and West Main Street. Includes all the way to the Recreation Center at 315 East Main Street. And all the properties that touch those streets. And then it also, north to south, runs from the Jessica Nance's place, I can't remember what, I just lost the list. It's not hers anymore, Nature's Cottage. From Nature's Cottage, the building that holds Nature's Cottage to the edge of our Commercial District on Salem Street. Stopping just at the church. So that is the boundaries that was presented and we're asking you to adopt.
Okay, what's the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the Thomasville Main Street District map.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor is one of the old heads up here that's been around trying to do some downtown revitalization since 2007. And you know, a couple of years after that, we had a major recession and we were making some strides and then we took a huge step backwards. And then we came along and went through about 2010, 11, along in there. And we started coming back and making some more strides and felt like we were, you know, really in good shape and bringing in some new businesses. And then the pandemic hit. And for the third time, we were really making strides. But the thing that's different this time is we're part of a program that establishes a blueprint for what we need to be. And though we all have our individual opinions about different pieces of that puzzle and what, you know, which ones we should do or which ones should come first. I think we all unanimously want downtown to thrive. And so as citizens ask us, well, you know, you, you do stuff and then nothing ever really happens. The Main Street program is going to make it start happening. So I just want to congratulate the staff and especially Tammy Joyce and her role in that and Pace for their role in that. Because I think this is the, the thing that we've been waiting for to spring us forward. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. You may record your vote. And it's seven zero unanimously approved. Next is item D, consideration of lien and foreclosure policy for community development. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This policy that is being proposed tonight is the first of its kind for Thomasville. We are recognizing that community development goes hand in hand with economic development. And we focused for many years on economic development. We've brought in large companies that have provided jobs and provided tax base into the city. But our neighborhoods have struggled. And while we've had partnerships with Home Solutions and others, working on individual properties one at a time, the City Council recognized that there was more that needed to be done. And so staff looked around, looked at ways that we could potentially address the concerns of the community, address efforts that we're making. And this is one piece of those, those items that we're, we're working on. You know, we've worked on upping our code enforcement efforts. And so a couple of years ago, council approved an additional staff member for code enforcement. We have good code enforcement activity going on. We've worked hard to address the issues of homelessness as much as we can within the community by, by seeking partners with others. We've also worked with Police Department to do enhanced reviews and, and patrols into communities. But that still leaves properties there. We also created the homes, the, the tool trailer through a grant program where individuals can borrow those tools to use to improve their homes, improve the grounds of those properties. But we recognize that there needed to be more. And so this is our attempt to enter into an area that we have not tread before. It is a conscious effort to focus the ability of City Council to declare certain properties tax delinquent or lien delinquent, as the choi, as the case may be, and to try to target those areas where these are showing up in, in, in larger numbers. So it is, but it's also trying to address the fact that we don't want to go after every single property that's out there. We, and that what we're really trying to do is improve the neighborhoods, but also get these liens taken care of. Because we have a lot of money on the books that we have spent money on for maintenance or otherwise. So we're trying to address that too, because that is revenue for the city. So this is an attempt to look and focus on those areas. So we have set parameters that we won't go after a property that potentially has liens against it unless there are more than $2,500 worth of liens. We also won't go after properties that are less than two years old that have liens against it. Because we want to give those property owners an opportunity to address their own properties and make, you know, get them back into shape, pay the taxes or pay the liens or transfer the property, you know, sell the property outright. But it does allow for the city to identify properties that do, that, that meet those thresholds. And then we would target those for foreclosure. The goal of the foreclosure is to either have the individual pay the foreclosure and pay it off so that we get right with them. B, that they make a decision to sell the property before it gets to foreclosure. C, it goes to foreclosure and somebody else buys the property using the foreclosure process. Or D, the city steps in and potentially purchases the property because we see value in, in investment into that area, working with the, the, those that work within the community development. The program establishes at this point, one group that we're working with because we have an established relationship with them. And we want to see how that works in practical, actual, on the ground activity. And then we can address bringing on other organizations that may also have the capacity to do this, whether they're private or nonprofit. Although right now, the policy is specifically to nonprofit. It's, and, and that was established by council to have some sense of, of, of control on that. If a private company wants to come in and buy a house at a foreclosure that's on the foreclosure list, they certainly will able to do that. We're not trying to compete with the private entities in that manner. It's just that we're trying to make sure that we have an opportunity, if we see an opportunity, that we could get a property and, and make that investment or have Home Solutions make that investment so that we can improve the neighborhoods. So that's, that's what we're doing here. And it, like I said, it's the first of its kind for Thomasville. And, you know, we, we have limited staff to manage it. We have limited capabilities, you know, to, to, to do this in large scale. So this is, this is our footstep into this. We want to make sure that we do it as best we can, the right way, without damage to the community in the process of just going in and taking property. We're not doing that.
Okay, thank you very much. So what is the pleasure of counsel with regard to this item?
Mr. Mayor, I happily make a motion that we approve the consideration of lien and foreclosure policy for community development.
Is there a second?
A second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion?
I want to really quickly clarify, the focus of this, Michael, Manager Brandt, is on vacant property primarily.
Yes, yes. The, the vacant property is the priority. If there are properties that are, that are constant nuisances that are occupied, then they would potentially be addressed, but the focus is those vacant properties.
And this process does not preclude private investors from getting involved at the foreclosure level. So properties will still be open to private involvement.
Yes. Well, we, we've had individuals come forward that have indicated interest in purchasing properties that are forecloseable because they have liens. And that's what prompted some of this discussion was, how do we get these properties out of people's hands that are holding them but have these liens against them? And the best way is to, to force the foreclosure process to, to trigger those activities. And again, whether it's the individual who pays off the liens, whether it's the, whether it's someone else that comes in and purchases the property or they sell it before it goes to foreclosure, you know, that, that, that pays off the liens is that process. So, so it's trying to turn those properties over and get them viable properties. We're, we're focusing on vacant properties in, in neighborhoods that have a high, low, moderate income demographic because that's where the, the lack of affordable housing and also concern about the quality of life within those neighborhoods that stems from these homes that get used for homelessness, homeless or, or other vagrants or just property crime activity. So we're trying to address that through this method.
Thank you.
I definitely want to give kudos and a shout out to our City Manager and our Deputy City Manager. I know it was a lot of conversations, a lot of education that we had to do behind the scenes to really make sure that we understood, like Michael said, of how to do this process for Thomasville and how to make it work for our city. Not making sure that we just copied and pasted another policy from another city, but we were really intentional about cleaning up some of our vacant housing in our city. So I'm very thankful for our city staff for doing that due diligence and that research, as well as our council for being proactive at addressing this issue. We all know it's been an issue for a long time in our community. And so giving our community a buy-in is something I'm extremely happy for. So thankful to our council for that proactiveness.
Well, and if I can add something, one of the questions that I had received were some, from concerns from people in the community about, you know, does this mean they're taking the property from me? This was my great grandmother's property. And frequently what happens is there'll be property that's passed down through generations where there's not will specifically devising the property to a certain individual. So it ends up being owned by seventy-plus family members and nobody has the money to do what it takes to gather all of them and find them all and research them all and file those legal proceedings. And so it just creates this issue. And by actually doing this, if there is a particular family member that wants to come in and retain that property for the family, they can buy it at the sale. So it actually gives them a mechanism to help them if they are truly interested in preserving their family property as well. So there's benefits both ways.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, you may record your vote. And we have seven zero. It has been approved unanimously. Now down to item E, consideration of resolution setting a public hearing on July 21, 2025 at 6:00 PM at 20 Stadium Drive, Thomasville Lancy regarding the annexation of 129 Kennedy Road. If you remember, this was, this was in committees and it came out to, through our city clerk, did the work, making sure this was ready for annexation. And so that has been determined, so now this is our chance to see if council wants to approve this annexation or not. So I'll ask for action on item E.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to call for the public hearing on July 21, 2025 at 6:00 PM at 20 Stadium Drive, Thomasville regarding the annexation of 129 Kennedy Road.
Sure. Okay, we have a motion to second to set this public hearing. And so is there any discussion?
Just one minor point that's really very major. I don't think I've heard anybody use the word voluntary. This is a, this is a request by the property owner to be annexed. We're not running out and trying to annex property that against somebody's will.
That's right. Anything else? Okay. You may record your vote. And we have seven zeros, so that public hearing has been scheduled. Now down to item F, consideration of resolution authorizing the surplus of a pool heater. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So when this facility, the, the tack was developed, it included that at some point it could include a enclosed building and could have a pool heater so that we could potentially operate year round. That was basically something that we built for the future. But in the process of all of this, the project construction company ordered us a pool heater. We didn't get charged because we told them that that wasn't supposed to be included, but we do hone it. And so since we have no intention to put that pool heater in operation and things of this sort will deteriorate over time, we think it's best that we, we surplus it. Staff work, with the recreation staff and myself have worked with our YMCA because we didn't want to just put it on, on our normal surplus process. We wanted someone potentially that could use this in our community to get a hold of it. And so we thought of the YMCA, the fact that they have a, a pool, an enclosed pool. We do a lot of work with the YMCA, sharing resources. So what was developed was a concept that we would surplus this property. And, and then on your next item, there's a process for you to make that donation to the YMCA. However, when we developed the resolution for the donation, it wasn't explicit that we were actually, that you had actually surplus this item. This is the larger dollar amount that I have the authority to surplus directly. So that's why this has to come first as a, as, as the surplus request to City Council before you can take the second step, which is make the donation to the YMCA.
Okay, thank you very much. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the surplus of the pool heater.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion? Okay, you may record your vote. We have seven zeros, so that has been unanimously approved. Item G is consideration of resolution authorizing the donation of surplus property to the Tom A. Finch Community YMCA pursuant to NCGS 168-280. Mr. City Manager.
Okay. So to, to finalize this, what North Carolina General Statute 168-280 allows for is, is council to make a donation to a nonprofit as in exchange for services provided. So what we have negotiated with the YMCA is that they will get the heater. In exchange for that, our after-school program will be able to participate in swim lessons and swimming events at the YMCA in the fall and winter this year. It's, and we feel that that's a benefit to our children that are in our program, that use our summer facility. And obviously will benefit the community by allowing the Finch YMCA to install a new heater that will, that they won't have to purchase at this point. So this is a good exchange, in my opinion, for, for working together.
Okay, thank you very much. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the donation of the surplus property to the Tom A. Finch Community YMCA pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-280.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? Okay, you may record your vote. And the vote is seven zero, so that has been unanimously approved. Item H is consideration of budget amendment 2025-P12-01. Mr. City Manager.
All right, this amendment appropriates necessary funding for the multi, for full multi-year cost of multiple software and other cybersecurity subscription agreements and capital improvements for the MIS Department. It totals $676,000 of surplus sales tax revenue that is appropriated to cover these information technology that is appropriated to cover these information technology and cybersecurity costs. All appropriations are budgeted as if all costs will be incurred in June, two thousand twenty-five. So, there's nor, a couple of different items that would be purchased that total this, but a lot of these are three-to-five-year maintenance agreements. So, that's why the number is so large. But there are requirements to pay those upfront, so they have to be extended out and we have to show the revenue right now. Again, uh, my thanks to the finance department for working this out quickly. Uh, we don't normally want to do things in June for such a large budget amendment. But because of the work that they do throughout the year and, uh, the, the detailed work that they do to determine revenues and underestimate revenues and, uh, excuse me, yeah, under, uh, underestimate revenues that allows us at the end of every year typically to have surplus revenues available for the emergency that comes along. And, um, you know, this fits into that type of category. So, this allows us to move forward quickly on, on these types of items that we need. And that's, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Realizing this is the end of the year and we're not having to take this out of contingency. It's wonderful that we have that excess revenue. May I ask what the general fund contingency amount is going into the last two weeks of the year?
I think it's around thirty-four dollars.
Thirty-four, okay, good. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consideration of budget amendment two oh two-five dash P one-two dash zero one.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to mention to the, uh, finance director, they call that sandbagging in most athletic arenas. I'm just saying, you underestimated well, my man.
Yeah, that's good, in our favor. Okay, you may record your vote. And that is approved seven to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we're now down to committee reports and appointments. And this evening, we'll start with Mayor Protem Jacquez Johnson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have not submitted a copy of my activities to the clerk, so, um, definitely not the only one, um, today. But, uh, it was a busy month this month. Got the opportunity to, uh, be a guest speaker at the fifth grade moving up ceremony for Liberty Drive, which was an amazing opportunity to, to see our scholars, um, moving up in that transitional period, but also be able to inspire and hopefully, uh, give them some words of wisdom as they transition to sixth grade. Um, we also had the opportunity to attend, um, a discussion that was really fruitful, uh, with the feasibility study, uh, with the Palace Theater. I was really, uh, thankful for Councilman Thrift as well as Councilwoman, uh, Shell that participated in our discussion, um, for some of that fruitful, uh, insight that was given to some of our community leaders on, uh, where we were currently and then where we also hope to be in the future. So, I will let that stand as my report and I will get, uh, my activities to the clerk this afternoon, this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peyton Williams.
Wendy does have a copy of my report, but it was two minutes before the meeting started, so she doesn't even know she has a copy of my report, but it is in there. While I would love to be spending six hundred thousand dollars on something more exciting than cybersecurity software, it is very important. And I'm so thankful that our finance department and our management does such a good job managing our budget, predicting and sandbagging and taking care of us so that we have this option. And it's, it's definitely frustrating, but it is not apocalyptic like it definitely could be. So, I really do appreciate that. June is also Pride Month, so I just want to say happy Pride. The most difficult and scary thing I think a person can do is be exactly who they are. So, if you're out there being exactly who you are, I am proud of you. Um, and you have an ally up here. So, I think that is all I have to say.
Okay, councilmember Grimes.
Wendy has a copy of my report. An answer to your question a minute ago that kind of caught me off-guard about the school tax thing. I, I have not been happy this year nor previous years or really knowing what they're spending our money on. I would like a better accounting and it being spent on proper things. So, that was my knee-jerk motion tonight. We just completed the end of last month Memorial Day. It was wonderful. Thank you, city. Thank you, community. Yesterday, Saturday fifteenth, fourteenth was, I mentioned it last month, at the presentation of the resolution, Flag Day and the birthday of the Army, Army. And I would like to, if I may, take a, uh, just two minutes of personal pleasure. Uh, I've just finished reading this book, Stories From A Soldier's Heart. It's amazing. And there's a poem in there called My Name Is Old Glory. And I hope I can get through this because it, it really, it touches me. I am the flag of the United States of America. My name is old glory. I fly atop the world's tallest buildings. I stand watch in America's halls of justice. I fly majestically over great institutes of learning. I stand guard with the greatest military power in the world. Look up and see me. I have fought every battle of every war for more than two hundred years. Gettysburg, Shiloh, Aplomatics, San Juan Hill, the trenches of France, the Argonne Forest, Anzio, Rome, the beaches of Normandy, the deserts of Africa, the cane fields of the Philippines, the rice paddies and jungles of Guam, Okinawa, Okinawa, Japan, Korea, Vietnam, Guadalcanal, New Britain, Plélu and many more islands and a score of places long forgotten by all but those who were with me. I was there. I led my soldiers. I followed them. I watched over them. They loved me. I was on a small hill in Iwo Jima. I was dirty, battle-warm and, battle-worn and tired, but my soldiers cheered me and I was proud. I have slipped the bonds of earth and stand watch over the uncharted new frontiers of space from a vantage point on the moon. I have been a silent witness to all America's finest hours. But my finest hour comes when I am torn into strips and used for bandages for my wounded comrades on the field of battle. When I fly at half-mast to honor my soldiers and when I lie in the trembling arms of a grieving mother at the gravesite of her fallen son, I am proud. My name is old glory. Dear God, long may I wave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hunter Thrift.
I'm not going to attempt to follow that. I have submitted a copy of my activities and I will, uh, let that stand as my report.
Okay. Councilmember Scott Stires.
The clerk has a copy of all the stuff I did and that's going to stand as my report.
Okay, councilmember Doug Hunt.
Uh, the clerk has a copy of my activities and, uh, one thing I'd like to just remind everybody about, we're going into summer and it's getting heat, getting really hot. The humidity's getting really high. Check on your elderly, check on your pets. Make sure you see somebody working outside. If you got a spare bottle of water, give it to them. It's hard jobs being outside in this heat and these guys really earn their money. And one other thing that, since he's in the room tonight, Mr. Eric Couple there is part of our committee that goes out and picks up trash all over Davidson County. He was actually out here picking it up Saturday and I went by and seen him in his lovely vest out there. But I would like to appreciate your whole crew that goes out and does that. You know, just make it known that these guys work really hard and they posted on Facebook, tons and tons of trash of people just being mean and throwing stuff out. But they get out there and pick it up and they're really committed to their job. And I appreciate you, Eric, and everybody that works with you. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Lisa Schell.
I have not submitted my committee report, but I will. But I'd like to take a minute to recognize our police department. They don't get recognized enough. We always hear what they don't do. A couple of weeks ago, my father-in-law, who was from out of town, got lost. And some of, two of our officers helped him. He was, his car had broke down on Randolph Street. These two officers stopped, they helped him. Not only did they take him to the parts store to get his part, they put the part on his car and contacted the hospital where his wife was at, got in touch with the nurses to get in contact with the family because he had none of our phone numbers with him to contact us so that we could come and pick him up and get him back to, uh, my sister-in-law's house. So, I just wanted to give a big shout-out and kudos to our police department. And Chief, if you would please let the officers know that, um, we really appreciate that from our family. And I will let that stand as my report.
Okay, thank you. Couple of things that I'll mention. Two of my favorite things to do as mayor, uh, number one is to participate in the parade of, uh, Parade of Excellence, uh, at Thomasville Primary School. That's done every spring, uh, kind of a reward for the students there coming to the end of the year. And they, they, it's a long parade. They march around in the neighborhood, the police department, fire department's there blocking streets. And it's just a real good time and a festive time and, and something that those children will remember all of their life. So, it's a, it's really a pleasure being a part of that. And as Neil mentioned, the Memorial Day events this year. I, I always love doing those events. Had a little issue this year. We had a lot of rain. Put a damper on some things, but, but all in all, uh, the, the, uh, the, the event has to go on, rain or shine. We don't have but one Memorial Day a year, so we have to take advantage of it. And, uh, so, thank you for the part you play in it. Thank, uh, Councilman Thrift, the same and, and any of the rest that participate in this event, uh, making it possible. It takes a lot of hard work. Uh, it's, it's a volunteer group that does it. And so, it, a lot of people thinks it's city of Thomasville. It's not. It's a volunteer group. They handle it and, uh, but we do have, uh, people in the city that do help with it and do a lot of work with it. And I appreciate y'all's work there. But rain or shine, we're going to have it. And it, it's like, it's kind of like the army that I, uh, and, and that really touched my heart, what you said about the flag and, you know, I can, I can remember times when I was in Vietnam and wherever we went, we were, we were out in the field a lot and, and our flag was always posted wherever we, because we were fighting for that flag. And, and that's what it means is that, that's our standard of our country is our flag. And, uh, there's no greater country in the world. So, uh, so let's always try to honor that flag and, uh, and, and, and keep our country strong. So, that'll end my report. So, I'll go now to our city manager, uh, Mr. Brandt.
I want to thank the city council tonight for approving the city budget. As you've expressed, it does take a lot to put that budget together. It provides the resources necessary to put, uh, put on the street the individuals that do the work necessary to run the city, whether they're in the police department, the fire department, the public utilities, the streets department, uh, whether they're behind the scenes, uh, working in, uh, finance or in the planning department, our H.R. department. You know, all of that is, is funded through the, the budget that you provide. And, uh, you have made, uh, hopefully, uh, we feel very good decisions about the budget that, that has been approved and will allow us to increase our services to the community in various means, whether it's capital purchases, uh, in the recreation department or whether it's, uh, uh, new efforts to bring, uh, new employees on to provide additional services or to bolster the services we already provide. So, it, we, we know that, that looking at a fifty-eight million dollar budget is a very large number. And, um, but it's made up of individual decisions, individual purchases, that we monitor very closely all the way through. And, uh, and we, uh, that's proven when we have our audits that are always clean audits with almost no editorial comment about it. And, uh, that's, that is the skill and efforts that are put forward by the city staff every day. As you are aware and the public is aware, we, we were, uh, involved in a cyber incident, uh, last week. We are still analyzing, uh, the, the downfall of that, uh, and attempting to recover our systems. It has been, uh, very difficult in some cases. Uh, and it is something that, that we are going to recover from. We are doing our best that it does not affect our customers, our, our citizens on their daily work. Uh, and of course, our, most of our employees, they're out working anyway. It doesn't matter. We never had a break in our nine-one-one services. We've never, uh, this, this facility, the pool facility, continued to run. We went to cash only for a couple of days, but, uh, it, it had over nine hundred visitors just this weekend alone. And that includes rain on Sunday afternoon. So, um, you know, our garbage collection continued as, as planned. Everything continued to move forward because that's the type of, uh, uh, staff we have and the type of commitment that people make, uh, to this organization. The, uh, it will, unfortunately, recovering from a cyber incident is not a short-term thing. It's a long-term process. And we will do our best to, uh, secure and continue to secure the, the information of our community. You know, when you, when you come after a municipality, almost ninety-five percent of the data is public anyway. So, we're not sure why they, you know, always come after us. But, uh, this is, we are not alone. While this is our first time, there have been over two hundred attacks, uh, in North Carolina over the last four or five years that have affected, uh, municipalities, counties, school systems, et cetera. Some are big, some are small. But we are recovering already. We're, we're taking the steps necessary to do that recovery. And, uh, hopefully, we will start to see our systems come online. Well, they've already come online and, and will continue to come online over the next, uh, days and weeks. So, it's a, with much thanks to the, to our city staff, our MIS department and all the third-party vendors that have come in and, and helped us with this process. I also want to give a quick shout-out to, to our city clerk. This, this agenda became quite confusing because of a couple of intricacies with the public notices and public, was it a public hearing, public notice? Was it this general statute or that general statute? And, uh, she couldn't get access into her system for the la, for, for a week, making all those changes, getting things done. So, uh, again, a testament to, to her and her ability to, to keep moving and keep dodging until she got a, a final agenda that you could look at tonight and know where everything was.
And use a typewriter, Steve.
And, and, and broke out the typewriter. Yes, yes, yes.
That's why she got all those initials after her name.
So, and, and I also, one, uh, well, two more. Eddie Bowling has been amazing through this process. He has, uh, you know, every time I turned and needed something or, uh, needed, you know, to understand something, I've been able to turn and, and he's been able to answer the question to be someplace that I could not be, uh, handling the, the processes that we're going through and, and, you know, giving, giving the sounding board and the feedback to make the next step that we need to make. And then Misty Whitman, our attorney, you know, this is, this is a crime that's been committed against the city. And so, we are addressing it as a crime in, in that process of making sure that we legally follow the requirements for these types of events and also preserving so that if by chance we can ever get a, uh, get a chance to, to find out who actually did this, that we can get a good case against somebody. It may be many years from now, uh, but we'll, we'll do, we'll do our best. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our city attorney, Mr. Whitman.
Good evening. So, I wanted to update you guys on a couple of things. And, um, Kern Street, the Kern Street School Project, it's been going on for quite some time. The hearing is now set for July twenty-fourth. Uh, we do not yet have the open, opening bid, but we should have that shortly and it'll be posted soon. But it'll be July twenty-fourth. And the way that processes will work at the hearing, um, we'll start the opening bid. If anyone bids against us, you know, whoever the highest bidder is ultimately at that hearing will then have, there will be a ten-day upset bid period. So, that bid will stand. Anyone can come in during that ten-day period and upset it by five percent. And then it will start over again with another ten-day period until such time as no one upsets the bid during the ten days and then it will confirm. So, we are moving in the right direction. So, I'm sure the community will be happy that something is going to be done with that property in the not-too-distant future. The other thing that I wanted to make you guys aware of, and it, it ties in with what Doug said about the heat. Mills on Wills of Thomasville. Mills on Wheels of Thomasville, um, they deliver six routes every day and feed, uh, approximately a hundred of our citizens every day, and these are folks that do not have access to transportation, that do not have family that live locally or with them or nearby. And so for most of these folks, the meals that are provided by the volunteers of that organization, that is the only food that they get and the only people that they see. And so lots of times those volunteers find people that are in medical distress, they find people in, in various situations, so it's extremely important and it's an important service to the community. But one of the things I want people to remember is that if you do find someone that doesn't have air conditioning, that they don't have fans, that there are other organizations in the community that work with Mills on Wheels to get those things to those folks. So if everyone can be aware of that as well, if you know someone that is suffering that doesn't have a fan, that if you'll contact either Mills on Wheels or another organization, they can get you in touch with the, the right folks to do that. The other thing is Mills on Wheels right now is short twelve volunteers. So there's twelve routes that currently do not have coverage, and so the volunteers there are scrambling, and there's some people that are delivering five routes a week. So if anyone in our community has the ability and can find the time, we desperately need volunteers for that. It takes an hour of your time. You can do it once a month, you can do it more if you want to, but it's an easy process that's extremely rewarding, and we currently have forty-plus people on the waitlist for Mills on Wheels. And if we could get twenty additional volunteers, we have the resources to deliver more meals financially, we just don't have the people. So we literally have forty people sitting there in the community that are not getting these meals because we don't have volunteers to deliver it. So we're really struggling to find volunteers, so please reach out to families, friends, churches, businesses, and try to recruit people to deliver Mills on Wheels. It's a huge need. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, deputy city manager, Eddie Bowling.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. As you heard, this has been a recurring theme of appreciation for our staff. Mo and Ed do that as well. It's, it's amazing to me to see the work of the citizens getting there every single day, both on the organ behalf, supporting our mission, mission, and values of our city, and also the city employees that have opportunity to work alongside us. I'm, I stand honored by the opportunity to work with each and every one of them.
Thank you. Okay, we are now down to item nine, closed session for attorney-client. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, you may record your vote. And it's seven zero, so we will now go into closed session. Thank you all for being here.